We have had questions submitted in email and hopefully they'll be sent by the audience. We are taking out any that are obviously mean spirited or that would have to do with the intricacies or specifics of the job. We don't have an incumbent in the race right now, so to ask you about budget questions and that sort of thing specific to today's budget, obviously, good example of something that you wouldn't have that information. So we won't try to ask you questions that you're not capable of answering today. That said, we'll start with Jerry. You have one minute. Brandon will tell you when you have 10 seconds left and then he'll tell you when you're out of time and if you'll adhere to that time constraint, I'd appreciate it. Mr. Harrell?
My name is Jerry Harrell, run the school board district two. I was born right here in Washington County, married a girl from Wausau. I grew up outside of Wausau. I spent nine years in the military, four years active duty. I was senior officer there in our work center, responsible for shipboard safety operation, make sure our ship got from one port to another and back home safe. The responsibility of 275 sailors was under me and we were really proud to be selected as that, won't go in any kind of awards, you know, because it was my duty to perform to the best of my ability to serve my country. I spent 35 years right here at Washington Homes Technical Center via Florida Panhandle Technical College. Over the nine years, I served 10 years as a pastor, foster parent, Lily coach, T-ball coach. And so I spent my whole life right here in Washington County serving our kids and that's why I'm seeking for district two board.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mask?
My name is Travis Mask. I also am seeking district two school board for Washington County here. I'm a lifelong member of Washington County. The only time I've ever been out of the county is when I served in the military. I made the SOP training calendar to train many soldiers while I was in there. I don't have a number of how many, there were just too many to count. I'm now a pastor at Shepherd's Gate Church in Sunny Hills. Worked for the city of Panama City Beach and if elected into this position, I'll quit that job and take into this job of ministry full-time, which I believe this job is also an extension of ministry. These children need to have God brought back in this school system and I feel like the Lord has told me to enter into this position as an avenue to bring Christ back into school and that's exactly what I want to do. That is where I'm going. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cleveland?
Hi, I'm Lou Cleveland. Most of you know that I've been teaching for 45 years because I follow you or your children or maybe even your grandchildren. But I'd like to share some things maybe you don't know about me that might help in the experience on the school board. As a part of it, I was instructor at Chipola College. I was head of the college level academic skills program, which monitored the class test for the state of Florida. That test had to be passed by students if they wanted an AA degree or a bachelor's degree. With that experience, I understand tests. I know how to look at it. I wrote a book and developed a course that was used in the state of Florida for reviewing material on the mathematics for that test item. So I do have some experience there and I know our teachers are very concerned about the accountability standards that the legislature has set forward. I'm trained in the Danielson model as part teacher ed. I work on adapting our program and looking at that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Do we have a question from the audience at this point? I'll ask one to get us started. What is your view on the purpose of public education? We'll start again with Mr. Harrell.
Public education acts as giving access to all students through a quality education, regardless of their race, creed, their gender, their religious belief, or social or economic status. Public education has provided a quality education back to 1800s and so the public education has changed over the last few years. If you ask 100 people what that question is, we get 100 different answers. And so that's what I believe in is the basic core of everything is the fact to provide a quality education for our young people as well as our adults.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Mask?
I agree with Mr. Harrell wholeheartedly. It's a non-biased form of education that allows any and everybody to come in at the same level. And I think we got some of the best educators in Washington County right here. They're some of the best. I've got a child that's graduated from this system. I graduated from it and I've got three more that's going through it. And I couldn't ask for a better group of teachers. Anytime you need them, they're there. And I think that's what it's for. It's where we can actually give an education to some people. In my, in my, my life, I couldn't afford to do private education for my children and it would be required for me to have public education for my children. And I think that's exactly what it's for, is exactly everything Mr. Harrell said, a nonpartisan educational system for the people.
Thanks, sir. And Ms. Cleveland, do you have a final word on this question?
As someone who's been a component of education for many years and part of that educational system, I see education as the building block for our democracy. If we don't have students and adults that are trained as children to understand and to be able to read and to make critical thinking decisions, then we are not going to survive as a country. And so I see that as a part of our very core. Also, I see education as a way for students to develop in their own passions. And I love that we have a general core of education and that we have schools that have diverse activities for our students because students have different passions, they have different abilities, and as educators, it's our responsibility to help focus them into those areas so they can grow to be a productive adult.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mask will start the next round of questions. Is there one from the audience? Jean?
What do you consider your strengths?
What do you consider your strengths? And Mr. Mask, you go first.
My strengths are that I'm a third generation citizen of the Washington County School Board. My grandfather being taught by Ms. Kate Smith herself, then my mother coming in, me myself, now my children. And I think one of my strengths are the love I have for this community. I just, from pastor in this community to mentoring kids that is in this school system, I think my strength is my love for the people of this area. I really do.
Are you done?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cleveland?
I think one of my strengths is that I have been in the classroom in, for the last 10 years as dean of education of the teacher education program. I have mentored students as they learn to become teachers. I've been in the classrooms watching students learn. I do understand the value-added model system that teachers are assessed on and parents are very important about their, their children, about if they're going to make a progression or not. I have written grants that have provided teacher training to students and teachers and I understand budgets. I have worked on budgets as part of my job at Chipola College. I've gone through board packets as part of Chipola College, so I understand personnel hiring practices and I understand setting goals and moving forward.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harrell, do you have a final?
My strengths are that I've served Washington County School Board for 35 years doing the understanding of, I don't know a complete thing because you don't know until you get there. But as I've taught in the classroom, math, science, English, auto body collision repair, I've been selected twice as the top, one of the top six instructors in the state of Florida to represent the state of Florida and rewrite and correct them for our programs through the state of Florida. And I was very thankful that I was able to be selected there. Also in all of that, I was a teacher mentor. I was department head over all the transportation and welding department there to make sure they had the money, the budget, and supplies they needed on hand. Mentoring, I've been a mentor for about 20 years now and seemed like I would always draw the one that really nobody seemed to be wanting to work with. And thank God that we've got the grace and the compassion to be able to work and to make sure our teachers, beginning teachers, have that quality of mentoring that they need to be successful in the classroom.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Cleveland will start the next round. As a school board member, do you, will you see yourself primarily as a representative of the community or representative of the school system?
I would have to say I see myself as both. I think that the community is very involved in the school system and parents are concerned about what's happening in the classroom and we want them to be concerned about what's happening in the classroom. And I see it as a collaborative effort between the school system and the parents. Anybody who's been in the schools know that the people who are in schools love children and they want the best for them. And so as we look at those and build that trust between parents and help them to make decisions that are right for their student, their children, that that is the best and not choose, that's the best avenue and not choosing one or the other.
Thank you, Mr. Harrell.
I believe you have to have bridge to both. You know, the only way you'd be successful is to have a bridge before. As I travel around, you know, the city of Chipley, I talk to several people and their concerns is about our education and the challenges that present. So what we're going to have to do is learn to build a bridge between the board and the, the community because we do serve the community, we do serve their kids, and we, we promise them to provide the best quality education for their kids or their grandkids. And so by bridging this together, we begin to work together, understand the needs, and let's get together and work and let's make sure that we have the best school board, best quality education in Washington County that can be provided to all students.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mask, you'll have a final word on this question?
I see myself as being for the community. The reason I say that is this is an elected position, elected by the people in the community and you're a representative of those of the community. While at the same time, we do do policies and we do do budgets, we do all that for the school board, I think the biggest thing is you do not get this position without being elected by the people. And I think we should be an advocate for the people, for the children, and we need to get more involved in, in seeing what the people in our district want. You know, it ain't necessarily what I want. What I want may not be what they want. But my job is to represent them and if what they want may not be what I want, I'll represent them in what they want. They're the ones that elected me in the position and I'm there for them.
Thank you, sir. Next question will be started by Mr. Harrell. Do you support an appointed superintendent much as we see in other parts of the state and county versus an elected superintendent that we enjoy here in Washington County now?
There's probably good points on both, but to me, I'd rather have an elected one because, you know, if someone is going to teach my kids, I don't have something to say about it. And if we take a board of five or six or whatever it is and it's appointed, you know, favorites can play, well, I can do that or whatever. You know, only about 30 to 40% of the community votes anyway in Washington County. And so I believe that every elected official should be appointed by the community who they will represent the kids to the best of their ability. And so I believe that we should be elected.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Mask?
Yeah, I believe also that it needs to be an elected official. I do not leave in mid-government and if it's an elected position, I believe that's the start of a socialist system and I am all for an elected school board superintendent.
And Ms. Cleveland, have a final word on this?
Well, I think if you look at the data, most school districts have an appointed school superintendent, but I don't feel that's true, that's necessary for Washington County. I looked at Kelly Brock and remember when he was superintendent in Washington County and what a great job he did. I think we're a little unique and for our situation for Washington County and the superintendents that we have, who have come up through the school system, who've been teachers, who've understood the process and principles, I think it is working really well for us. And I think as long as, that you can have a system that is providing quality people through an elected process, that that's the best of, of the world that you want to be in. We're lucky to have that world here in Washington County.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Mask will start the next round of answers. Questions?
What's the first thing you would do if you were elected as a member?
What's the first thing you'll do as an elected school board member?
Well, the very first thing that I would do is I would, I would want to take classes it takes to be a certified school board member. So I would take those classes that it takes to do that, then I would turn around and the next plan of action I'd like to see done is I would really like to see a special Olympic program brought into Washington County. I don't know how many of you've ever watched a, a video where these handicapped children are running a race. And when you see them complete the race, and again, I repeat, complete the race, not win, not come in second or third, but just complete it. If you see the reaction they have, that reaction is what I'd like to see here. And I actually have somebody that is willing to help me create that program for this county.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cleveland?
Well, I, I know that I want to familiarize myself with the process and the school board and the information that I need to be a collaborative member of that school board because I, I would just be one of five. But I have a, an initiative that I would like to implement with the agreement of some teachers and try a pilot program. At Chipola, we started a program with our teacher ed students where we had the teacher ed students go into the homes when the parents did not show up for parent night. And they met the parents, they talked to the parents and told them they were the teacher that year and they wanted, they had goals for their students and they wanted their children to, to progress through and that they had what they, their classroom rooms were and what the child would need and gave them opportunities to where they could get it. And that worked really well as parents worked with teachers. So we had great gains and achievements.
Thank you, ma'am.
Well, the first thing to do is, because you don't know exactly what to do until you get there is get trained, get your board certified. The first thing I'd like to do is to get in and get some data. I'm a data person. Do you know, if you'll take the assessment test from grade three to grade 10, actually about 47% of our kids is in grade level three, four, and five in their testing. That means we have 53% of our kids that's falling behind in grade level, in the level one and two testing. So we have to get that data collected and find out what our teachers need to help get our kids from that grade, excuse me, the level one, level two test and get them promoted to level three and level four and level five. So by collecting all that down and working with our teachers gets a better quality education for all our kids.
And again, I apologize. Ms. Cleveland, you will be first on the next one. And Kelly, you have a question?
Okay. With our vocational system, I feel that we're sort of a unique position. We have a lot of regulations to respect. But I have a sort of passion that we should prepare any child that wants to go to college, we should do our best to prepare them for them. But also, I really believe that if we had each one of our graduating students to leave our campus with at least one sellable skill, that we would benefit greatly because the number of our students that go to college, the percentage is fairly low, probably 25, 27%. Probably 50% of those probably drop out at some time. And we're going to have to change the mentality to a degree of support, not only with our school personnel, but our community. But I believe somebody needs to step forward and consider in doing this. What is your position?
Yes?
Well, I would like to say that I think Martha Compton has done a tremendous job at the technical college in bringing new programs and not keeping the same programs that might be outdated for the workforce of tomorrow. And so I thoroughly agree with you, Ms. Rock. I've, this has been a passion of mine because we look, when we look at the, the goal of Florida is to get students ready, college ready, and they say career ready. And as, while I went through the carpentry program, carpentry program here, those machines are all where you have to work on the computer, you have to map through a coordinate system of how to do the cuts of those. And so there is that college ready from there, but the career is essential because if they get out of college, they may not even be gonna, be able to get a job in the one that they chose. So I think it's almost essential in our workforce today.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harrell?
Well, that's a good question for me because I've been a career technology student 35 years and I believe in the system. And I believe that we have about 25% of our kids going on to college having been dropped out the first two years. I have actually talked to kids that have dropped out. They said either they run out of money or they lose interest in their college and then they graduate, a lot of them, when they graduate, they don't have a career whatsoever. This is one of the main reasons I'm running is to integrate our general education into a career technology. As you know, our school board has introduced a bill to the state legislative. So what we can do is get away from that ideology teaching that we have at the state level saying, you've got to teach this. If we can get out from under that, become that experimental school, so we can say, okay, kids, you are that want to go to college, this is where you can go. Those that want to go on and get a career, they can go here. But that's where we need to start and working and that's why I'm basically running. My number one platform is to get a career.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mask, you'll have a final word on this question?
Ms. Rock, you've hit something that is very dear to my heart and I'll explain why. When I was three years old, my father left my family. I did not have a father figure in my family again. The next father figure I had enter into my family was James Guy about 13 years ago. I never got to learn how to work on cars. I never got to learn how to do carpentry things. I never learned how to do the things a boy needs to learn how to do. So as an, as an education, I think it'd be very wise for us to start a program where them kids come in here and make it a requirement for them to get some kind of trade that they can fall back on in hard times. Because just as Ms. Cleveland said, so many times these kids go to college and they have their heart and desire out there and they don't get the job in the field they went to school for afterwards.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harrell, you'll start the next round. Kevin?
How active will you be on the individual campuses as a school board member or not so that the teachers and the students see you involved on the campuses and not just making the policies?
Correct. Yes. I plan on being. I've already talked to several of the high school students that I will go and visit them during lunch hour. I've talked to several teachers about meeting with them individually. I've been also invited to go to their classroom and observe them teaching. So I plan on and be 100% involved with our total education. Not only that, I'm purpose to meet with the families of some of the students. Some of the students are having problems in school. Whatever I need to do to help bridge and make a better quality education in Washington County, that's why I'm over there. But I do plan on spending all the time with Vernon, Chipley, over here at the Career Center in regards to what it is. I plan to be in there and to be, offer any kind of 35-year experience advice I can.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mask?
Yep. I've already been involved in many of the programs. I've come and watched many of your plays and support you 100% at Spanish Trail Playhouse also. Been to many of the sporting events, provided food for the PTOs for both schools, for Vernon and Chipley. We've, we had the backpack program that went on in the schools for children with needs that wasn't going to get fed during the weekend. We provided backpacks for them to take home to be able to eat. I provided water when they had a bowl of water notice in Vernon. You know, I've been actively involved already in each set of schools and, and I'm not just for Vernon, I'm not just for Chipley. I'm alumni of Chipley, but I love both schools very well and I, and I have been actively involved in each one of them. You can't, can't do a whole lot more than I've already done, but I, if I get this position, I will be there a lot more often.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cleveland, do you have a final word on this question?
Now that I'm retired, all, all my husband, Al Cleveland, always said, look and take a part-time job and make it into a full-time job very easily. And I guess that's kind of the nature, the nature of my personality. At, at Chipola College, even though I was in the math department, I participated in the plays, I was in the theater, I participated in the community chorus and the magical group. I just love being with students. And I found out that when I went there and saw them performing in the, on the baseball field, on the basketball court, that I, or in the plays, or in the music, or on the show floor, that I viewed them differently in the classroom because I valued them for their whole person and not for how they performed in, just in mathematics. So I love being in all the arenas. I've been in the school for 10 years. I feel very comfortable there and would love to have the opportunities to be there.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Mask, you'll be first on this next round. Jean?
How do you feel about constructing a school in the south, the south end of the county instead of continuing to lose students to Bay County?
Yeah. I think that's the goal we need to set. Vernon Elementary School needs a new school. They, they really do. Now, the realization of it, you just built this state-of-the-art school with Kate Smith and when we will ever be able to budget something like that again or get the grants for that again, it's probably going to be a while. And to build something else at that same level, you know, we, we came into a very unique situation in the fact that we came in when building materials and all that was, was cheap. And we built a state-of-the-art school that all the other school systems are coming and taking note of. So us to be able to build something on that level again may not be feasible, but we really need to do something with Vernon Elementary School. All the other schools are new or fairly new and I think we really need to look into that, but it may be a while for us to get that in the budget.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cleveland?
If I understood the intent of your question, it was about building a new school in the south of the county, a totally new facility?
A new facility to avoid or try to stop the loss of students to Bay County when they should be in Washington County and losing that revenue that's being going to Bay County, keeping it in Washington County.
Well, I respectfully say that I probably would not be for that. I'm, I'm familiar with counties who have a number of different schools and the cost of constructing those schools, keeping them up, providing lunchrooms, providing principals, providing support services, is a huge, huge cost and it takes out of the total budget. And I really do not believe that the FDU would get from pulling those students that would even meet the cost, even 10% of the cost of what it would be to maintain a difference, a whole different school system and the whole different building.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Harrell, you have a final word on this question?
Well, our budget's sort of hard right now to, we can even consider one, but yet, but as you know, the Washington County School Board has got some property already down south of Wausau area and they do have that on the board in case, or in case the expansion going on down in Sand Hill. It's a growing facility down there, especially Sunny Hills down south, that is a steady goal. Yes, we're losing students to Bay County because maybe transportation, one reason or another. But also at the same time, in the last couple, three years, we have picked up Blountstown High School students to come over here to get their education. So we are losing some students and yet we're gaining them somewhere else. And so it's getting a little offset. As soon as we can get our budgetary and get our schools situated right here in our close neighborhood in part, then we'll be able to consider that. But we got to wait till probably another 100% growth down there so we can offset the cost of it.
Thank you, sir. And Ms. Cleveland, you'll start off this next round. What do you see as the respective roles of the school board and the superintendent?
I think the school board roles are clearly defined, that it is for monitoring and financing and approving the budget. It is for setting the goals for Washington County and it's for working with the superintendent on developing policies for the school system. And so those, as looking at those, that would be the three goals and that's your, your three areas of responsibility. Of course, it is important for you to get input from, from teachers, from community members, from parents, even from students as you make those decisions in those areas. And I'm really pleased to say that I think we have a tremendous school board that works very well collaboratively with the superintendent. And so I see the role of the school board and the superintendent is to work collaboratively to make the best decisions for the students and the school system.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harrell?
That's a, Dr. Cleveland, that's a great answer. That's exactly what the school board actually does. But not only on that, having an experienced teacher or an experienced educator or someone that's worked in the education system, especially in Washington County, whether it's Jackson County, Holmes County, doesn't make any difference as long as they got some kind of experience or even like a church, you know, that same kind of community type skills. We can offer suggestions to the superintendent also because remember, he doesn't always have the answer, but he can be able to lean upon us for some suggestions and some wisdom and some knowledge because we can be able to bring the gap between the community back to the school board and into, and to the school board office, to our superintendent and make sure we support him 100% and help him and be a success. You know, if the top is a success, everything else from bottom, from top to bottom would be a success.
Mr. Mask, you'll be the last word on this question?
The only possible thing I could add to either one of theirs, they spelled it out perfectly, would be advocacy between the public and, and school. They did it great.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Harrell, you'll answer first on this next round. Understanding state and federal law, as individuals, children are currently allowed to pray in public schools. Should this right be expanded or changed in any way? Again, taking into account that we already have federal law that directly addresses this, but personally, how do you feel about that situation? And Mr. Harrell? And Mr. Harold, you'll go first.
Take it all the way to the borderline. That's what I believe. I believe in prayer in school. In fact, I've had kids stop in the middle of class and pray for one for another. When you see kids praying for somebody else because a tragedy just happened to them and they console them and all, it's fantastic. I believe, believe that prayer moves mountains, it covers up holes, it makes a way where there seems not to be a way. It makes where you able to cross a desert, it makes you able to go into a land of line of dens and crawl up and go to sleep. Prayer is a substantial part of our kids' environment. We should be able to take it all the way to the federal government line, right there at the fence line. And hopefully we can change that and interpret it and integrate it a whole lot more in our school system.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mas.
I totally believe in prayer in school. And in fact, I've been to each school and prayed with the children at the flagpoles. I am a total advocate for prayer in school. You look at the government, you look at these school systems and the common denominator of all the problems we're seeing today is that Jesus has been taken out of them. And I think we need, like Mr. Harold said, Jesus is the answer to all these problems we're having and he's the only way out. He's the only way we're going to fix this.
Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Cleveland, you have a final word on this.
I think that you can see from the answers of the two men that their faith is strong and I would say the same thing for mine. I really believe in the power of prayer and I believe in the student's right to be able to pray in schools. We are concerned about bullying with, with students and the bullying that's happening and we're trying to teach students to treat each other compassionately and the very first step is to have them pray together.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mas, you'll be first on this next round. Somebody help me out?
I'll help you.
Thank you, Darren.
This movement, I think past school boards over the last several years, there's been a number of things that they've been able to accomplish. But as you are elected and come on board, what do you see as your top priorities, preferably maybe the top two or three?
Mr. Mas, you're first on this.
Probably one of the most important things I want to see is that common foregone. Now, as a, as a school board member and us on this level, we can't just remove it. But I can write plenty of letters and I can be the squeaky wheel that's looking for the oil. And that's one of the main things. For a child that has test anxiety that maybe had As all year, to let one test determine whether they're going to pass or fail, that's a no-go in my book. To decide whether a teacher deserves a pay raise or not according to the performance of the child, no, that's a no-go. There ain't a teacher out there that don't bring money. Ms. Cleveland and Mr. Harold can both tell you, being former educators, that they brought money out of their own pocket to fund the classrooms that they were in. And you tell me that they don't deserve a pay raise? No, I can't handle that. Do you know what a test says? No, we need to get that out of there. I can see it becoming a catastrophe.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cleveland.
I think one of the first issues that I would like to look at is attendance. If you look at the, you can't teach children who are not there. And, and so I would like to look at what we could do to improve attendance of our, our students. And I think we're all guilty. We don't think about it. Fluid parents take their children out of school to go on vacations with them when they can be there. If you would look at the attendance on Friday, because people have gone on four-day work weeks, they take their children off on Friday and they're not there on Friday. We have other parents who won't get up in the morning to get their children to school. And so I think that is one of the most pressing issues. It's a complex and difficult issue, but you can't back away from it because it'll only get worse. And so that's the first issue I'd like to pack.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harold.
One of the most priorities I feel like I need to do or we need to do is implement what we call a career assessment, exploitative assessment. What that does, we can do it on eighth grade level, sixth month, tenth grade level in sixth month. And what that'll do is his kids will take an assessment and when they get the report back, he gives them the top three interests in their life. You know, I wonder how many college kids we would save if they knew exactly what their top three interests were before they get out of school? You know, how many would they go, well, I don't need to go to college, I can go here. Well, wait a minute. I was going to go to Jackson University, but I want to be an engineer, but Georgia Tech is a lot better. So it helps them get a guideline and help them plan their future sort of early. We do it in eighth grade, then we have their education, ninth and tenth around those interests, and then we do it in the tenth grade again, the eleventh and twelfth. Let's get them interests together and let's work together, you know, for the interests of the kids. Because if the kids find out you're putting them first and their interests first, then it makes a difference.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cleveland, you'll be first on this round and it's a good segue into the next question, which is, what do you see as the primary role of the school guidance counselors and how, if at all, would you attempt to change or alter that, that machine now?
I think the role of the guidance counselor has changed tremendously in the last few years. They have moved from working with students in terms of their academic progression through the curriculum to testing monitors. They spend a huge amount of time getting the tests ready and getting students scheduled into the labs for them to take the test, that they don't have the time to work individually with the students. Chapala College has kind of stepped into that gap and we had mentors at every school. I was a mentor at Chipley High School that met with every senior to talk to them about what their plans were when they graduated and help them find schools or technical schools or universities or colleges for them to go on for further study or if they say job placement. So they, they really have changed and I think the biggest area would be getting testing monitors to get them back to where they originally said for.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harold.
I know our guidance counselors are hard, but let's look at it practical. You know, I talk to students, here's what they say. The role of the guidance counselor is to help a certain group, when I say certain, it's not due honor to it, help get into college. And so if they're spending their, their time being pressed down to handle thirty percent of our kids, what are we going to do with the seventy? What I, I think we should do is get a career technology counselor in our schools to help alleviate. Because you know, if the guidance counselor, they understand the general education and the growth, that's true. And they understand which way the kids should go if they go into college. But a career technology, which will handle the seventy percent of the load of a high school right now, they'll be able to help them identify using those interests that they have, where they should go. Now, look, if they want to go to college, here's what happened to me. The career that I graduated from here and the, the career that I learned here paid for my college. So when I got through college, I was debt-free and that's some of the things we need to let our kids understand they can go to college.
Thank you, sir. And Mr. Mas, you'll have a final word on this.
I had three great and that was Susan Roberts, Ms. Woods, and Mr. George French at the high school. And I believe they need to come in, assess each child individually. That's their, their place because not every child set up to go to college. Not every child is, is college oriented or made for that way. And, and assess them according to maybe a career goal or plan and set them out on that path, put them out that way. And just lead, guide, direct them. Let them know, hey, you got this program at the technical school, you got that program at the technical school, this may be an avenue for you. Or maybe you could, you, I see something in you that this will be a good major for you in college. And then let's go through the list of colleges that would be good for that particular field. And I think that's what they need to be a counselor in that area.
Thank you, sir. This will be our last question, after which you'll all have an additional minute to wrap up and explain why we should vote for you. Darren, you have a question?
Unless you do.
No, I defer to you.
What's, in your opinion, what is the best way to address an underperforming school?
And Jerry, you'll be first on this one.
Is collect the data, like I said before, let's collect the data and find out what's going on. You know, as a teacher, you know, if I'm running behind in something, I'm always able to pick up the phone and call somebody. I didn't have that much pride. My kids were more important to me than my pride. And I think a lot of the teachers that are doing, they're doing the best, but sometimes they just need someone from another school. Pick another school that's got in that same grade level or whatever, bring them in and let them tutor them maybe. We have teacher training days. Let them come in and help that teacher and let's get all that support we can to that individual and see what we can do to elevate that teacher so her class and grade is elevated.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mas.
Well, I don't actually know exactly what all our school board's done so far as to bring them to where they are now. I'm not at that level to where I can tell you that. But I know this, when the elected officials that are there now came in, we were at D school. They brought them up to a B school. Our third grade students has just scored number eleven in the state, which is a significant change from where we've been. So whatever they're doing, I want to get in there and find out what they're doing and let's build on it more. What it is, I can't tell you what it is, but I'm willing to, to get in there and work with them on what's been working.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cleveland, you have a final word on this question.
We are very blessed that we don't have any underperforming schools, but there are lots of resources. DOE will come in and give help, free help. They'll work with the teachers, they'll set up with faculty meetings. I think I saw that process at Vernon High School, that they went through three years of help through the DOE. But we are so fortunate that our teachers are on the cutting edge. We had a grant to train teachers on the CECLONS, which is the new Florida standards that they are having to teach. We had more participation because of the academic analysts at the schools and Gail Riley. We had the highest percentage of teachers trained on that than any of the counties that we had for the thirteen counties that we did the grant. So I applaud our teachers for keeping us there.
Ten.
And our administrators for giving the support to those teachers and we're blessed.
Thank you, ma'am. We want to thank all of our candidates. They'll now have one minute to wrap up and make your best plea for everyone's respective vote. Mr. Mas, you're, we go to the first one.
Okay. I have a young child that's eighteen years old. He goes to Hope School in Marianna because they do not have a program set up here for his handicap. Along with him, there's ten other students that go to Hope School in Marianna. So that means the ones from Caryville and the ones from Ebro also go there. I couldn't imagine being on a school bus from Ebro or Caryville to Chipley here at the Washington Square Center where they trade out and then go to Hope School. I know my child gets off the bus about three fifteen in the afternoon and he is totally wiped out. He is done. So to continue on driving down there, I couldn't imagine. So I would like to set up a program here in Washington County. We don't have to build no schools, we ain't got to do none of that. We got basically a new building that's there at the Kate Smith Elementary School, right there at the, at the carport where you drop your child off, you look straight ahead, that's where it's at. We need to set that up for a handicapped school, bring that money that's going over there back to Washington County and allow it to stay here.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Cleveland.
Well, I wish I had my experience in Travis's age and what it was running for school board. I think that my strength is in the experience, the breadth of experience that I've had in K through sixteen. Somebody said, who's K through sixteen? And that's K through twelve and then at the college level with four grades. I've had experience on the state level, on the county level and in the classroom. And I would love to be able to use that experience to make the school system in Washington County the best it could possibly be.
Thank you, ma'am. And Mr. Harold, you have a final word today.
That's better than my wife says. Hey, glory. Can I record that? But anyway, I'm running because I'm needed. We got to get the bigger picture here in Washington County. You know, since nineteen sixty, prior to nineteen sixty-seven, we were just a local school. Since nineteen sixty-seven, the building of this school, we've become on the national level. We're drawing students from Tennessee, North Carolina, Louisiana, Alabama, Georgia. We're no longer a little city school. We are, we are attracting adults and high school students not only here, but all the way around the country. So we got to have a big vision, big view and, and a growth-minded school board. Now, look at what we do. We give adults a second chance to get an education that they dropped out of school. We're giving high schools an opportunity that dropped out, have a high school. We're getting college students to train so they can go to work. My goodness, we got the best school education in any county. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for your indulgence. Thanks for your attention. I think you could probably agree that up to this day anyway, all of our forums or debates have been successful. Again, we'll be letting you know going forward, the scheduling for the remaining races. One thing I want to point out is that today Hank Hamilton made his full application as a member. So going forward, we're going to have a big round of applause for our new county manager.